The Eastern Michigan Excursion Camp. In the AM session, they got to pick a field that they wanted to try to go into. And then the PM, they could pick something else. I guess probably one of the biggest highlights, because I was at the cultivating event, was Chick-fil-A. The kids got Chick-fil-A. So on campus, and they were excited. But the biggest thing is, is that I think with our college and career readiness initiatives, you're starting to see them stretch K-12. And this wouldn't happen with people like Jen Curry, or Daryl Beebe, or Beverly Edmonds, who work behind the scenes to make sure that they week meet, we meet weekly with people from Eastern Michigan University. So we are very pleased with that relationship. The other thing is, we want to make sure that people register for our summer programs. We have unique summer programs. The majority of them are free. It's going to be kind of on a first come, first service basis. So I would highly recommend that people go to our district website and look at what all the offerings are. Some of the K-8 offerings are out of this world. Some of the especially elementary offerings are geared at career tech and STEM stuff. And the learning is going to be pretty fun. I want to thank the Oxford Fire Department. They made a huge donation of a fire truck with 21,000 miles. I want to thank Chief Matt Majestic, who I'm friends with, as well as Assistant Chief Randy Vesper. They didn't have to make that donation. This truck is incredible. We had a fire event on Friday where our kids actually had to extract some dummies from a vehicle. And to watch our kids perform in front of tri-county fire chiefs was incredible. And it's another opportunity for our kids to kind of move into a career path. This week, tomorrow, we start our Young Shards, which is a partnership through the University of Michigan Flint. Our kids have been working hard. They get to show off their entrepreneurial spirit with their projects. It's similar to that of a science fair. We're excited about that. And then on Wednesday, we're going to have a community champions breakfast, where we're going to recognize all our business partners, community partners, staff and students. So we're pretty excited. Again, I apologize, I'm long-winded, so I want to make sure I get these in. Countdown's on for the class 2023. Please join us. I know Mr. Rossiter talked about the Innovative Academy. They will have their graduation on June 2nd at 6:00 PM at the Hype Recreation Center. The next day, we will honor both John Glenn High School at 10:00 AM and Wayne Memorial High School at 2:00 PM. Both ceremonies will be held on Eastern Michigan's campus at the George Gervin Game Above Center, which is formerly known as the Convocation Center, at 77, 799 North Hewer Road in Ypsilanti. The last thing I want people to do, we heard about these resources. If you didn't attend our back-to-school fair last year, you need to this year. We are going to have games. We're actually going to extend it and make it bigger this year. It's going to be on August 16th, and it's going to run from 3:00 to 6:00 at John Glenn's football field. We use adjacent fields as well. We have backpack giveaways, games and stuff for the kids. But more importantly, we're going to stretch it a little bit more. We're going to have some other community arms coming out to provide kind of medical assistance, as well as physicals. The last thing is, our John Glenn Health Center is up. So you heard Ms. Dyvis today talk about Adams having a health clinic. We actually are going to have two in the district. John Glenn's is, it's open right now. It's going to be unveiled in August. But if students need physicals and things like that, they can fill out a consent form and have access to our clinic. It runs really anywhere from five years old to 23-years-old can access our health center. So again, I just want to make sure I got that out there. And I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Dr. Dignan, and thank you for the presentations this evening. They were very concise and appreciated. The next item on our agenda is 265.23, Citizens Comments on Non-Agenda Items. This is a portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the board on items which are not on the agenda. And we have several people that would like to come up here and speak. And each of you has three minutes, and you're welcome. Melinda Harris is first. Ms. Harris?
I was hoping I wouldn't be the first one, but I like this microphone. When you go to the Westland City Council meeting, they make you go down below the people. So that's more intimidating. So I appreciate all the parents that came here from Wildwood. Today, I got to meet some people, and I appreciate hearing all these nice presentations. But it goes back to this is about the kids. We do have a lot of children here tonight, and it was great hearing everyone. I think like we're in a special situation like this, where we see actually children here that want to speak, that maybe we could squeeze them in first. So in the meantime, I want to apologize to the school board. When I was at the Westland City Council meeting, I said I was angry with the school board. I don't know who makes these decisions on transferring a principal to another school and making her an assistant principal. But I'm just not happy with whoever makes these decisions. Sorry, nothing personal, but we have to speak up. Someone told me many years ago that people are not business deals. And it seems to me that employees here in the district are being traded as objects as the district seems fit. When I was growing up, elementary school, Stottermeyer, we had the same principal for years and years. And I spoke to somebody in the district, and I asked her if she could send me an email with the examples and all possible reasons why they would transfer a principal. And she said, no, I won't send you an email. Other than that, she was pleasant, and she told me that I would grow to love the new principal as I did Ms. Swanson. So it was said at the city council meeting that we need to hear more positive things, not negative things. And I'm sorry, I'm bringing up something that might seem negative to you. But Ms. Swanson spent 6.75 years at Edison, and then she was moved to Wildwood. And now they're bringing in an assistant principal from another school and making her principal. So that means it's going to be our third principal. So we didn't, most of us didn't appreciate receiving the email on Mother's Day weekend. And that was kind of, sorry, I've got the kids back here, so getting a little distracted. I think they're excited. Bear with me. I feel like that was disrespectful to many parents, including disrespectful to Ms. Swanson, who is a mother to over 500 children. A neighbor told me they spring it on you, so we don't have time to fight. I also reached out to school employees. There is a fear that they will lose promotions or places in the school. Employees in the district should not be afraid to speak up. When the employee was, bear with me, my notes are kind of scared. I just did this tonight. Oh, I had talked to some school employees, and they said, when the email went out, they said, well, that could be me. So Wildwood's a family. Ms. Swanson has been a mother to all of us, especially the children. We are a family at Wildwood. You don't break up families. Please retract your decision and keep Ms. Swanson at Wildwood. And the others, have you chosen to take her place? You can always find a place for them. So Ms. Swanson's a hard worker. She stays after hours, and we want to keep her at Wildwood. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Alex Idar? Idar? My apologies. Are you Alex? Hi, Alex. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, I think Ms. Swanson should be the principal at Wildwood still, because when, so when it's the morning and we, and you get drove into school, she opens the door for you and leads you to the school. And then, and then during like, during like Student of the Month, she, she has like these cool like round of applauses instead of just like this. It's like around the world. And also, and also she's really nice, and she helps, she helps kids when they get hurt. Like one time I hurt my pinky, and she, she helped a lot during that, not to lie.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you very much. Tremendous courage. We appreciate you coming up here and telling us how you feel. Hayden Yoel? Hadley? I'm sorry, I'm doing my best. Say whatever's on your mind, we're happy to hear it.
I think Ms. Swanson should still be the principal at school, at Wildwood, because she, whenever I'm sick, she will drop off homework at my door for me to do, so that I don't get like bad scores on my report card. And she helps with all my school activities, like Girl Scouts. She's my troop leader, and she's a leader to the whole school. So I think that she should be our school principal.
Thank you very much for your courage. Jackson Cunningham? And is that Jamison?
Yes.
All right. The reason I would like Ms. Swanson to stay at Wildwood, because she is a very nice teacher. She would always help us do anything we needed at the school. Like if we needed help with our homework, she would help with that. If we needed help with like a bully or something, she would help with that. I think she's a very good principal, and she should stay at Wildwood.
I think, I think, I think Mrs. Swanson should stay at Wildwood, because one time my stomach hurt very much, and I went to the office, and Mrs. Swanson helped me very much.
Thank you. Natalie Whaley?
Good evening. I'd just like to say, thank you for hearing us all tonight. And as a John Glenn graduate, my siblings and I, and nieces and nephews, have all been Wayne Westland students. And like others have mentioned, I was fortunate enough to have my favorite principal from junior high through high school, who retired at my graduation. And I would just like to say, I started my son in charter school, which was a very bad kindergarten experience. And so many people told me about Ms. Swanson and her great reputation. And then I met her several times last summer to make my decision of what school, because I'm actually a Hamilton resident, I would be Hamilton. And I did School of Choice, and she's just been amazing. And she's the reason my son's had such a good year. She's the only consistency in his, he's losing his speech teacher, his principal, and hopefully he'll have a more consistent teacher if I keep him there for second grade. Because it's been a lot, he has a lot of anxiety. And he told me Ms. Swanson was his safe place. So I would just like to ask you to rethink your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whaley. Kevin Carter? Hi, Kevin.
Hello, how are you today?
I'm good, thank you. You just go ahead whenever you're ready.
I think Ms. Swanson should stay at Wild, sorry. I think Ms. Swanson should stay at Wildwood, because she's a really good principal, and she always sticks up for everybody that's hurt. And those, that's in, that's having a hard time with their work. She always helps them with it.
Thank you, Kevin. Thomas, is it Trudan?
Trushan.
Say it again for me?
Trushan.
Trushan.
Ms. Swanson should stay, because she, she sticks up for people, and she, um...
Because she's a good principal, maybe?
Yeah.
Are you done?
I don't know.
Okay, good job.
Abigail Krebitts?
She left already.
Abigail left. Julie King?
Hi there, I'd like to thank you. I recognize a lot of you from the Zoom meetings during COVID, and everything you did to make sure that our kids were safe and in the best position. I get very, I hear, see all these little kids here, and they're saying their thing, and good for them, you know? They're learning leadership at Wildwood. I've been a homeowner in Westland since 1994. And who knew, 25 years later, I'd have two little kids in Wildwood? And I fully understand, people, you know, jobs got to move around and stuff, and there's always reasons. But as I'm thinking back, my son started Wildwood when Mr. Swanson was the principal, and he was a great guy, too, you know? It was his first year, and then Mrs. Swanson came. But something had happened when Mr. Swanson was there, where I sent him an email, and it was something that happened really inappropriate on the playground. And I was just like, did you ever talk about the kids? Like, I had to step in, and I was yelling at the kids about it. And, you know, did you guys talk about these things? And I never heard back from the guy. He never replied. Mrs. Swanson replies on the weekends, at night, on vacations. I drive by, I live around the corner, I drive by that place all the time, and her car is like there constantly. So then I also saw that in 2021, 2022, Westland Community News honored her with Principal of the Year. And I have a hard time understanding, when I saw the transfer, I thought, you know what? Somebody else needs her. She's so great, right? So they're going to send her somewhere else, because Mr. Swanson got a promotion. And I'm like, not discounting that, he was fantastic. But when I saw that she was being turned into an assistant principal, I'm not understanding how someone who is the Principal of the Year, who helped us through COVID, including the shutdown, the transition, the hybrid, getting everybody back, making all the kids wear masks, making them understand like how important that was. And just, you know, she's, she's always at every, she's at everything, every morning, she's out front, jumping around with that silly little wolf mask on, getting the kids out of the car. I mean, this woman, she really cares, so I...
Time.
Well, thank you for your time. I think that you understand.
Thank you for your comments. Theron Allen? Theron Allen? T-H-E-R-O-N? Sir?
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Committee.
Good afternoon, Ms. Theron.
Please excuse my appearance. I actually just came from baseball practice, where I have a championship team. Never canceled a practice up to today, because I felt it very important to come and talk to the Board today. Very engaged in my community, a member of the PTA. Ms. Swanson got me a member of the PTA. I'm on very youth, mini-youth boards, coach football, baseball, basketball. Also used to own a school in Westland, on creative hands, 130 kids, about 35 teachers. And so I say that to say that I know there's a lot involved with staffing. I know there's a lot involved with the three Rs of recruitment, retention, and retaining staff. But Ms. Swanson is a rock star. When I say a rock star, she's amazing. I'm actually out of district. I actually transferred to, to the school because of Ms. Swanson. She's, 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 she's not doing it for the money. I've seen her take money out of her own pocket to buy stuff for the kids, to, to, to have a principal day for food for the kids, whatever it takes. She's, she's a person that really does what it takes. And I'm for, want to take one for the team, whatever's best for the district. And I actually read the letter a couple of times, and I guess I was a little, little appalled, because when I read the letter, it didn't give any explanations to why the change was, what was the rationalization behind the change. And so I read it a couple of times, and I said, okay, well, she's being transferred to assistant principal, assistant principal. So, and I think about, how does that affect morale of someone that's a rock star? How does, how does that retain someone that's a rock star? How does that give to recruiting someone that's a rock star? How does that, how does that help recruit other staff to say, okay, well, this person was Teacher of the Year, but we're going to demote her to an assistant principal? It's not about the money for her, but it's a demotion. And so, and I say, and I say this to say that, okay, well, if she was being transferred to another school within the district as a principal, that's fine. At School of Choice, you can do what you want to do. But for the transfer to assistant principal at another school is a demotion. So I, in closing, I say, please take in consideration of the feedback you're getting from, from those kids. Please take in consideration for the feedback from, from the parents, and think about the community involvement, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. By the way, you look great. Dr. Fleming?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. There's always time for good news, right? Are you guys ready for some good news? Okay, well, I'm here to bear it. My name is Dr. Fleta Fleming, and I'm with a local organization called Equip. And Equip is very pleased to announce that four of the Wayne Westland students will each be receiving a $1,000 scholarship for the class of 2023. There are two from John Glenn and two from Wayne Memorial. So I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to partner with you to create not only opportunities for education, but higher education. And it does take a village to raise a student, a well-rounded student. So we're a part of that village. And we will announce the actual winners of those scholarships, perhaps at another board meeting, because they don't know that they're winning until their honors nights at their various schools. So we're pleased to award $12,000 in scholarships this year, of which $4,000 will be for Wayne Westland kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Is there anyone that wish to address the Board whose name I haven't mentioned or brought up?
I do.
Sure. Will you fill one of these out before you leave for us?
Yeah.
Thank you. Introduce yourself.
My name's Maya Cunningham. I am Jackson and Jamison's mom. Mrs. Swanson is the epitome of what a principal should be. She welcomes each child daily into her learning environment. She knows not only all of her kids, but all of their families. She takes an interest in their lives, inside the building and out. She attends the children's sporting events, dance recitals, cheer competitions, and any other extracurricular they pursue. She's a problem solver and makes sure that each child feels seen and heard, which is clear from the outpouring today. And I just want to say thank you to all my littles who have waited so patiently today, because this is long and boring for them. She always goes above and beyond. Mrs. Swanson is a large part of the reason we transferred from out of district. Taking her away is such a disservice to the Wildwood Wolves community.
Thank you. I saw a hand over here.
Right here, and then that.
Come on up and talk to us.
So you got that little one?
Think we're going to need some microphone help. Go on up, kids. Anyone who would like to talk to us, come on up.
Okay, so this is Ellie Trushan. She actually signed up for the Young Five, because she was excited. Daddy, sorry. Daddy will hold you, daddy will hold you. Kevin, you need to stand back for us. So we signed her up for Young Five, because we knew Ms. Swanson was going to be there. You want to say something, Ellie?
I hope, but needs to stay, because a lot of people are trying to make her go away. And they need her to be at the school for the whole day.
I don't know if you understood that. She said that she wanted Ms. Swanson to stay, because people are trying to make her go away.
Thank you very much for coming up here to tell us that. Will you tell us your name, please?
My name is Serenity. One thing about Ms. Swanson, that she's really kind, and I really like it when she's really kind. And I like it when she helps people. And I think it's really, really, really kind. She's the best principal ever.
Well, thank you for coming up and telling us. Who's next? Will you, will you tell us your name, please?
My name's Morgan, and I think Ms. Swanson should stay, because she's, she has a very kind heart, and she's very nice to all the kids in Wildwood. And she barely ever yells at anybody, and she's just really kind. And she helps everyone who gets hurt.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who hasn't already addressed the Board? Ms. Cunningham?
No, that was her. She was filling it out.
Okay, is there anyone else? Thank you, everyone. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to 266.23, which is a review and recommendations of the members of the Board of Education. Ms. May?
Thank you. Again, good evening, everyone. I'd like to first just say a great job to our student presenters this evening, Jackson, Ruby, and Scarlett, leading us in the pledge. And I'd also like to say congratulations to Alyssa from the Innovative Academy. And I'd like to just thank the littles that stayed this evening to voice their concerns, and, and the courage that it took to go to the microphone and to share with us your feelings about your principal. So thank you so much for that. I would also just like to commend the staff this evening for the boundless work that they shared that's happening throughout the district. So much was demonstrated in tonight's recognitions and presentations. And I have to say, Upward Bound has a little special place in my heart. I was an Upward Bound counselor when I was in college. So I just know what a wonderful program that is, and having that opportunity to mentor high school students as a college student. So a little shameless plug for Upward Bound. And then lastly, I'd just like to say, as we prepare to bring the 22, 23 school year to a close, I'd just like to say thank you to all the students, parents, staff, teachers, and administrators for their dedication, passion, and hard work. I've had the pleasure to attend a variety of events this school year, and I guess my best descriptive word is astounding. Each event that I was able to attend, there was just so much love and compassion and learning, and just such a positive culture and climate. And so I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful to be a part of that. I'm grateful to witness that. And lastly, I'd just like to say to enjoy your summer. Relax, be safe, and continue to explore through books, playing outside. And that includes adults, not just the kids. Visit with your family and friends, and I look forward to serving next school year. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May. Ms. Hyatt?
Yes, I'd like to thank the students who did the Pledge of Allegiance. And also, I'd like to thank all the little ones that set up after their bedtimes to voice their concerns about their favorite principal. You guys, that's amazing. And that's why... And that's one thing I like about Wayne Westland, they show leadership and you start at an early age. We definitely appreciate that. Um, I'd like to say I had a very exciting week with the school board this week. I was able to attend the Skill Trades Career Fair with the kids from the eighth grade and it was amazing. Um, there were hands-on activities and to see like when they had like the pipe fitters making like twenty-three to thirty-four dollars an hour. I mean, the live apprenticeships, uh, the hands-on, we got to see, um, I found out for the first time what a tuck point is and I had the kids actually work with one of those companies called Ram and they had like the brick laying out and they had to put the concrete on there. So it was really awesome to, you know, experience that with the children. Um, I was also able to go to the District Improvement Dinner that they had about the amazing things they're doing in Wayne Westland. I was just blown away. Uh, each school did like three to five different things that they're doing with the district. Um, I was able to attend, um, the Extraction with the Career Tech with, uh, William D. Ford. I'm super excited to see we're having a Fire Academy, a Police Academy and the three point five million dollars for the new facility. That's just going to be amazing. I was blown away with that. Um, I was able to go to a couple of, of plays. Uh, Wayne Memorial had Little Shop of Horror. Uh, John Glenn had Addams Family, phenomenal. The band, the acting, I felt like I was going to like a, a play like at the Detroit Opera House. It was amazing, like the talent. And I would even like to see somehow we could even work to have like maybe one of the schools be like the Performing Arts like Wayne Memorial because they're just awesome with the band. Um, was able to, uh, go to the Holocaust Museum. I've always wanted to go and it was nice to be able to experience that with the Wayne Westland Community School. So that was amazing. It seemed like, it's like a powerhouse of activities like every day. It's just so much going on. Um, and, oh, my favorite, and I've been putting on my Facebook page, is the William D. Ford Construction Program. That house is amazing. It is selling for two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Beautiful. So if you guys have a chance, definitely drive by. I was blown away. I mean, we have some of the best resources. I told Dr. Dignan, I was able to go see, uh, the governor over the weekend at an event and I bragged about Wayne Westland, about all the programs we have. And the one thing I like about the state of Michigan, they have a lot of money in skilled trades. So, you know, if we can get some additional money on top of that to help us, I definitely want to get that money. But it's just amazing futures. Uh, Upward Bound, like Ms. May said, I was a, a student of Upward Bound in high school. I was able to be a reserve police officer in high school, working undercover, working with the liquor commission. I got my degree in criminal justice and that was a life-changing program. I was a student, I lived in Inkster, went to Wayne Westland. That changed my life. Between me and my brother, he went, we lived in the same house. I went to Wayne, Upward Bound, he went to Glenn and he didn't have those opportunities and it just, it makes a big difference. I have my master's degree, a really good career. So those programs are very important. So I'm always a big supporter of those programs. But I'd like to just say, we got, we're doing an amazing job in the district. I mean, great futures. Every time I see a Wayne Westland bus, I get excited because I'm like, that's Wayne Westland. So Dr. Dignan told y'all, I'm the biggest cheerleader of Wayne Westland because it's just an amazing district. And the love of our staff, our board members, it's just like a real family. And I'm just really excited to be a part of that. So that's all I have to say. I can't wait to graduation. That's my favorite. I cry like a little baby. Because I feel like a big mama, like all of our kids are graduating. And as a board member, we did what we were supposed to do, make sure our kids have awesome futures. So I'd like to thank everybody, staff, students. I mean, it's going to be fun. I can't wait to graduation. And I'd like to say too, Dr. Dignan helped me and my personal, with my son with, um, graduating. So now he's going to be graduating in August, um, at the Michigan Institute of Aviation Technology to be a welder. So thank you so much. And with the job fair, he's already got three jobs already lined up, coming out.
Thank you Mel. It's true, she does cry. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Amanda Dybus and Mr. Beebe for their mental health presentation tonight. How absolutely thorough it was in terms of what this district provides for, uh, mental health. I'd also like to thank, uh, Mr. Albrecht for his, uh, uh, annual, uh, RISA comment. This is a very old argument. I have personally sat, um, in meetings with RISA when these came up before. I still am trying to get my head around how that they are able to withhold funds that are designated for our district. When we met with them, there was, uh, no real excuse given. And, um, and so um, I, I think it's, um, time that, um, this board, uh, looks toward, um, having a complete explanation as to why these funds are not granted. Thank you. That's entirety of it.
Thanks, Dr. Weaver. Chief Neal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. In nineteen seventy-five, I hired, I didn't hire on, I took a test to get on the fire department and competed against more than three hundred people. As Civil Service Commissioner for Fire and Police, a couple of years ago when I was still on the commission, the department had five vacancies and only three applicants. Something has changed. There aren't the people there used to be that want to serve the community. And it's really important to us. The city of Westland provides us with advanced life support services, which is just like bringing the emergency room to your house or wherever you are. And it's been dramatic, the change in medical services since they've done that. But we need to inspire more people to become firefighters and EMTs and that's what's so great about the program we offer here in our schools. We need to get to the, the kids when they're young and let them know what a great job it is and what a great service it is for their community. And so for that, I'm very thankful that, that we have the program, that Dr. Dignan supports it as he does and that we actually have wonderful young candidates that are going to be the future saviors for us. Whether you have a fire or any other incident or a medical problem, these young people will be there to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Vice President Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Um, thank you JD Ruby and Scarlett Barnes for the Pledge of Allegiance. And piggybacking on some things other people have said related to all the presentations, I think we touched on every student, whether they're highly skilled, in need or in special needs. But even more important, even some of the students that have the greatest needs in our community are actually involved in providing services to others. I mean, that's saying something. Uh, it was, it was a big deal. Uh, Ms. John Amore spoke about Upward Bound and mentioned that someone won a Gates Scholarship. If I'm not mistaken, that's the sixth one at least out of that program and Gates is Bill and Melinda Gates.
That's a five hundred thousand dollar award.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the, for school all the way through a graduate program, as long as you want to go. I mean, that's really saying something. Finally, I just want to thank everybody that spoke tonight. Uh, it's important that we have a forum that you feel confident that you can speak and say what's on your mind. I won't ever be here if that ever goes away and our public can't come and address us. I think that's extremely important. Thank you for being here. Thank you, thank you for what you said. It was important. And with that, I conclude my remarks.
Thanks, John. I would like to thank the parents of the children who brought their kids to their school to tell them that they can address their Board of Education when they're unhappy about something. And not only that, but how to conduct yourself when you're unhappy about something. They were respectful, they did an excellent job and I know that every member of the Board of Education heard what they said. The Board isn't going to comment on, uh, any issues involving, uh, the employment or where the superintendent decides to use the resources, the human resources given to us. I'll just say this, everyone in our school district, every student and every employee has a path to, uh, attain their goals. The professional development doesn't stop with the, the job that you've been assigned. And it's obvious to everyone that this person's, uh, ability to create relationships is so exceptional. Frankly, uh, we need to take advantage of that and that's what we're doing, so. I would like to say that for young, for young families raising children to know that they have the resource of the Family Resource Center and all of the things it was that Darrell Beebe and Amanda Dybus discussed tonight, just to think that all of those resources are available to you. But it's kind of like a tool. If you don't know where it is, it doesn't do you any good. You have to know it's there. And I'm very excited to know that we're going to do a community outreach to let people know, uh, that it's out there and what's available for them. I am, I am interested in taking, uh, taking the training, by the way. I think it would be an, I think it would be good to know what everyone's, what everyone's learning. So I, schedule me for that. I'd like to do that. My friend Miriam Katie, in fact, our friend Miriam Katie, asked me if I would mention that the Wayne Westland Relay for Life will take place on the tenth of June between eleven AM and midnight. There's going to be music, entertainment and of course you'll be able to walk around in a circle for a long time if you want. This is going to be at Titan Park at nineteen oh one North Carolsen and if you'd like to donate to this event or learn more about it, you can do so by going to www-relayforlife.org, Wayne, uh, Westland, Wayne, Michigan to donate. Let's see, what else did I want to say? I wanted to say thank you to you, Dr. Dignan, uh, for everything that you put together tonight and for making the decisions that the school district needs to have made. So thank you, sir, for that. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Heinz, support. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed no. We're adjourned.